Now of the beginning of our regular board meeting for February fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. At this time, if everyone would please either silence or turn off their cell phones. We have a second here. And then join us for the pledge, if you would please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is Denise giving us an update on any additions or deletions?
Sure, we have two additions and additions. Jay has brought forward the nuisance code enforcement position for you guys to take action on today. And we also were updated yesterday that our wolf depredation grant is due on the twenty first, so we need to cover some ground on that today.
Okay, very good, thanks Denise. Our first item is public comment. Before we take that, I'm just gonna note that we have a public hearing scheduled for ten-ten, and we will no doubt open that and leave that open throughout the meeting. And Denise, I'm sure, will remind me to close it at the end. And then, ten-thirty, we'll have another public hearing that will also remain open. And the only other note I wanted to make is, as best as we can work it out, because we have a couple of folks coming in at eleven AM, we're gonna ask legal counsel at that time, or around that time, for legal updates dealing with the Second Amendment ordinance, ordinance request. So with that, public comment. Any public comment that doesn't have anything to do with today's agenda? Hearing done, as I said, we're gonna start at ten-ten on the first ordinance hearing. So we'll go down to the mental health contract, one-four-seven-nine-nine-three amendments eleven and twelve. Denise, she gave us a little bit of an update yesterday.
Sure. So we have two amendments. The first one is going to affect us in a negative manner. They're both gonna affect us in a negative manner. But amendment eleven, they did an increase to COLA of ten thousand seventy-eight dollars, but they decreased our supported employment funding by fifty thousand. So the difference of that is in our amendment. And then for amendment twelve, they decreased our funding by a thousand dollars for reallocation of our past service funds related to Medicaid plans.
So just for clarification, when you say affect us, it'll affect our service provider?
Correct.
For mental health?
Correct.
Okay, that's the hospital?
Correct.
The money's passed through county to the hospital for mental health services?
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment number eleven to the agreement number one-four-seven-seven-nine-three. That's a reduction of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept contract amendment number eleven to the contract number one-four-seven-nine-nine-three in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine twenty-two as a reduction. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make the motion to accept the twelfth amendment to agreement number one-four-seven-seven-nine-three in a negative amount of one thousand dollars.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept contract amendment number twelve in the amount of a reduction of eleven thousand dollars to contract number one-four-seven-nine-nine-three. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the, we had a presentation yesterday from Jake on the local public safety coordinating council appointments recommendations.
So we just have to formally appoint the recommendation that's coming forward. And the recommendations, I'll make a motion to appoint the following members to the list. Jake Greer, Ken Kestner, Beth Hadley, Trey Swamser, Dan Henderson, Steve Brown, Anne Casbaum, Carrie Magninveni, and Cheryl Formwell.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to appoint the members that were just mentioned. I'm not gonna go down through their names again, as mentioned. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have the state contract three-one-five-three-nine, the continu- continuous operations variance permit that was presented to us yesterday in the intergovernmental agreement by our roadmaster. Is he, I know you talked on this one, is he gonna be here?
I tried getting hold of him, I-
He was not planning, yesterday he was not planning that.
Okay. Mr. Bailey, you read this?
I'm trying to find it.
Senator Governor LaGrane, uh-
Yes, yes. This one's fine.
I'm looking for it. Please, can't hit my back. I'll move to accept Senator Governor LaGrane's continuous operation variance permit authorization of Lake County. This has to do with ODOT permits.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept the intergovernmental agreement and continuous operations variance permit authorization of Lake County and ODOT with the state agreement number three-one-five-three-nine. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Rock production stockpile contract.
This is a contract that was put together with the engineer on the federal grant, Dog Lake Lane, was put out to bid by the guidelines of the grant. It was presented to us yesterday in work session. They opened up the bids a week ago, and it comes with a recommendation from the engineer. Engineer is willing to be on the phone today if we had any questions. So I have, I was approached by Harvard Construction. They were the next to the lowest bid. They mentioned that where they was gonna stockpile the rock to meet our desirable place. Within the bid guidelines, I have stayed within the bid guidelines according to all the process. The bid went out for a twenty-mile radius. Everybody had the equal bid opportunity. And review it with, with legal counsel, review it with the engineer. We have to stay right within the guidelines. That was fair to everybody. So I don't know if anybody approached you or talked to you about the meeting today. I know there was some discussion this morning. But anyways, with that said, the recommendation, I will follow the recommendation from the engineer that's come before us to award it to the lowest bid, which is Knife River Corporation of a hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred dollars as lowest bid.
I'll second that. It's been moved and segmented to award the rock crushing bid to Knife River in the amount of a hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred dollars for the road project, federal highways project out of Dog Lake.
With that, there's a, there's a time period that is following the guidelines within the I think there's a seven-day, seven-day timeframe that the board- I don't, Mr. Bailey, you know what it's called, not for opposition, but for-
Appeals?
Appeals or whatever.
Correct. We had a good update on yesterday's. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Yesterday, we had one additional addition that I did not add to today. Road Department also had their annual recertification of financial assurances that we need to address.
We have it in our packet.
You do have it in your packet, but I did not carry that forward.
I took it out. Because I looked at-
Do you agree that we'll open up the hearing?
Oh, yeah, it is. It is. Thank you. Okay, we will, at ten-eleven or ten-twelve, we'll open up the public hearing. It's on county ordinance number one-seventeen, ways of necessity jurisdiction. And I'll ask legal counsel to give us a little update, if you would please.
Okay. Occasionally, the board gets requests for, from landowners to establish a way of necessity so they can access a public road across neighboring landowner's property. And this is essentially a judicial process that the board engages in, but state law allows us to transfer that jurisdiction to the court where it actually is more efficiently handled. And so that's what this ordinance does. And we have a letter from Judge Nichols agreeing to accept jurisdiction, which is nice in terms of cooperation, but it's just more efficient to do it. It doesn't change the process any. It just puts the process in the courts, since it's really a judicial decision the board's having to make anyway, so.
Very good.
And this will take two public comments.
Just like any ordinance, we have to have two public hearings separated by at least thirteen days.
And our next hearing on this will maybe be on March first of December.
That would be early if you could have.
Yes. Okay, we'll open it up now to any public comment on this ordinance. Hearing done, we're gonna leave this open throughout the meeting in case anyone wants to comment at a later time. And we will go ahead and bounce down to the land sale list for Mr. Darwin Johnson.
Yesterday, we discussed this quickly, and I'm just here to make sure that I'm available for you if you have any questions about the properties at Dog Lake forty-three. I recommended eight, that we hold, which puts us at thirty-five, or four option. We held the first Monday in June. It's a sure sale, so they usually send a representative, sure. Just open the meeting, but then myself and Karen Smith hold the auction right here.
Hold a microphone, nobody back there.
Sorry, guys.
There you go.
Can't wait till Jimmy posts yesterday, my wife, I told her, she thought that was funny.
Yeah.
A pin. Sure, I appreciate it. But we will have only thirty-five if you go with the recommendation that I gave yesterday. That's about fifteen less than we have last year or so. As we talked about as well, there'll be a reduce, you know, a reduction in the amount of tax that we're going back to the districts once, once we have sold all these properties, at least for this year, hopefully.
And as we pointed out yesterday, the reverse of that, because they're not foreclosed, it'd be more of going back to the taxing districts through actual tax payments.
Yeah.
It's, it's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a good order.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll move to approve the order of sale of county properties acquired by Lake County.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the order of sale of county properties as presented by our director of the program, Darwin Johnson. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Darwin, you're next too. Road slash without alley vacation request.
So your package of information is order of vacation draft with alley between blocks seventeen of OBL, which is working, valley land coming to second edition between a number of blocks, and then also the streets part of Dakota Avenue, which is South Tenth, and part of Hugh Street, which is, which was the Platinum Street thirteenth. But anyways, this is in there, there's plenty of information. Obsidian Renewables is the only adjacent, therefore, ORS three sixty-eight point three five one allows a vacation without a hearing when either myself or roadmaster, in this case, I have made a recommendation to, that it's in the public's best interest to vacate these streets, and so the projects can move forward.
And you can, with, and you talk with roadmaster often?
You know, I didn't on this one, but, you know, they're, all the previous ones are unapproved streets, and, you know, previous discussions always been, yeah, the more we can vacate, that's fine, we're never gonna, you know, maintain them anyways.
Yeah, they're not in our system.
And they'll be fenced, I mean, it's their property, it's gonna be fenced.
Mr. Bailey, you reviewed us, the way vacating days are always in the guideline.
Did this come before us, must have before, when we asked him?
Yeah, we've done a bunch of these, and, and this is, you know, most of where their project boundary is right now for both of their solar projects has gone through this same process without, like-
Yeah, that's what I thought. This is, this is routine, we're doing it, it's all the appropriate. There's no public concern or really any possible objection, since it's all the appropriate.
With that said, I'll move to approve the order of vacation in the matter of vacating proceedings of certain public land within Lake County.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the vacation request as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Under our communication, these will be the same.
This is pop three, sorry, highway thirty-one between Valley Falls and Paisley. Full closure piece probably of county homes that requests has been made by Hunter Communications to do some fiber insulation on existing rightways across that property, utility rightways. So they are just asking for that from us, and, and I felt the best that I represent this as, as been the practice before with full closure of properties. Where currently, this property is available for sale. If we agree upon it, we'll make our best and attempt to notify the next owner if that's there. But it will be pretty obvious since power lines cross that property, and this is doing that same response, so.
So, Mr. Bailey, my, my question on this is, is whenever the town gives foreclosed properties, we don't get title search of any encumbrance, any easement city rightways or anything on there?
Right.
I'm all for this, as far as telephone lines is there already. But should we put something in there that is their Hunter's Communications responsibility to research and, we, we don't do a title search on any of these properties. And as, as we've found out over the years, sometimes it comes back to a few years later, and it's not exactly what it is. And so if there's some kind of emergency, we should put in a motion to-
We could put that into caution then, to exercise the research on their own, on their own side. There's no obligation that we do anything, as you just described. But it, it's worth letting them know, so they'll come back later and say, why didn't you tell us?
Okay, so I guess the motion doesn't mean in a good direction towards Darwin's petition. Okay.
So just, just quickly to point out too, this is on the over the counter for sale list on the website, and it's currently at fifty-eight oh eight is the sale price. And in June, it'll drop down to twenty-five percent, and we'll have it sold for sure, so, I mean, nothing.
How big, how big is this?
Uh, it's just under ten acres because of the road, what, what the highway has taken out. But it, it will drop down to somewhere around the three thousand dollar range, so for sure.
And last week, it was a little late.
Yeah, it was probably underwater, so a good, good boat docked right off the highway.
It's what, you saw it out tonight, too.
Yeah.
But just so we, we're sure, they're gonna submit to us the easement.
Yeah, they, it's in, I believe it's in the packet.
Okay.
So-
Then I never turned it out.
I didn't see one in the packet, but typically, they would prepare the, the document that's then recorded, so that they have their easement is actually on record. And that would notify any future landowner of its presence as well.
There is no easement included in our packet, it's just the letter requesting, so we'll have to follow.
We can agree to grant them the easement today, but then, to make it official, they'll have to submit the easement to us that we then sign and they record.
So I'll make a motion to approve this contingent upon them bringing the easement to Darwin to be signed, and for him to relay the information that we may of their best interest during research or title search on this property if they deem necessary.
I think he's gonna be brought for the board to sign.
Oh, okay, then. Easement to the board to sign. So we're approving it, then we will have ring back the meeting, he's gonna bring it to us.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'll second. It's been moved and segmented to approve the proposed easement with Hunter Communications as all of the discussion captured. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
ODOT ought to buy a piece of property.
Yeah, ZX Ranch, that is, that actually was long. Before June, I'll probably try to hold one of those.
Okay, our next item is our two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen biennial transit funding recommendations. Denise gave us a good overview yesterday, but-
We do have two items. We have the potential redistribution of funds from the agency being Lake County and our two providers, InterCourt Family and Goodwill, to the senior center to meet their needs for the remainder of this biennial. And then distribution for the upcoming biennial. Do you want me to, I talked really fast, I can be really quick about it, but I don't know if we need to do that.
No, why don't you just give us a real, you gave us a great update yesterday, but just since this is a new day.
Okay, since it's a new day, just keeping in mind, for the new biennial, we have a reduction just over twenty-eight thousand dollars from the state. That is statewide, not just them picking on Lake County, but all providers have received a reduction. Providers did go through the RFP process and submit their requests. My committee met and did a breakdown on potential funding. The agency is to receive sixty-two thousand. That is for a new software program that will cover all three providers for all of their transit dispatching and record keeping needs. Also admin fee for the two years and training for the two years. ICFC recommendation is for eighty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Lake County Senior Center will receive ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Keeping in mind that they also receive an additional ninety thousand in veterans, veterans on transit money. And Southern Oregon Goodwill, they're working on rebuilding their program over in the Lakeview area, and they feel that for this biennial, they can get away with eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Great update. And just, just for the record, I mean, it's all of it, that when we talk about, on these biennials, we're talking two years' worth of budget, so the ninety thousand on the veterans specifically is forty-five.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll move to approve the recommendation of the distributions of the special transportation funds for the next biennial.
And the redistribution.
And redistribution.
For this biennial.
For this biennial.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the recommendation of the redistribution of the remaining two thousand fifteen, seventeen biennial funds as presented, and the new distribution of the two thousand seventeen, nineteen biennial funds as presented. And just a quick note, Denise, to mention it again, that I think was really good, the relationship she's built with the providers, that the providers all saw the need to do what is ultimately in this packet, so, thank you very much.
And they were, they were great to work with, they always are, so.
Very good. Okay, any other discussion?
Just, just to point out, just in this meeting, and what we're doing, the trend is, is that state funding coming down has been reduced. Amendments in mental health, special transportation, both show that that's a trend, as we have other departments and everything that get a lot of state and federal funding. I think we're gonna see this, I mean, I'm just, we're saying this with my prediction about three percent, that some of these programs that get pushed out there, they start-
I think you've read the key leads, and you've crossed the law correctly.
Yeah.
Yes.
So with that said, where we've come to, and then the funding that Denise has done, has been great.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you for that. I think we're gonna see this more and more, and just to start in the legislative session too.
Well, I mean, Payne and Denise probably knows those numbers inside and out, but it, we, we saw three, four, five hundred percent increase in our program since you've taken it over a few years back.
Correct.
We've got services out there to everybody, so, very good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Those grant applications will be submitted this afternoon, so, for those funds.
Okay, because of the nature of some of this other discussion, real quick, I'm gonna, if it's okay, we've got two minutes below, I'm gonna drop us down to the recertification, the, the annual recertification. Mr. Bailey, you've looked at that, it's on the line fill. It's, it's a standard annual thing we do to certify that we have available funds.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
This is, this is routine, we do it every year. It's just a question of assembling the numbers and reporting it.
Okay.
So I'll move to accept the annual recertification of financial assurance as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept the annual recertification of financial assurance as presented, which shows we have adequate funds, above and beyond adequate funds for the eventual closure of our existing line fill when that day comes. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's go ahead and catch the wolf depredation grant.
I'm gonna let Denise, she's, I have the wolf depredation committee.
Sure. So for our wolf depredation, we, it was brought to our attention yesterday that our grant application is due on the twenty-first, so we are in high gear. I've sent out emails to all of our committee members, letting them know. What we drafted are the same numbers that we submitted for last year's. We do have one change that we will be making on Friday, because we did have a actual degradation. And in order to recoup those costs and get that rancher reimbursed for his loss, we have to include that in this year's grant. So we'll have those final numbers on Friday, but we just need to, if you agree, say yes, move ahead with the grant application, so I can get that in by Friday.
Okay, so you need this to be approved by motion, being that it comes through that we have a budget within our-
That is correct.
A budget, so we need, we need to approve this grant application. So I'll, I'll move to approve this grant application with the addition that Denise is talking about on the depredation.
Okay, I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve the wolf depredation compensation financial assistance county grant program grant application for two thousand seventeen with the additions that Denise said will be included. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. It's now ten-thirty, we're going to, at this time, open up our public hearing on county ordinance number one-sixteen. It's an amendment to the existing nuisance ordinance. And who's gonna give the overview?
I'll take the first shot. There's several of us, the, I call the subcommittee here. This was put together, an amendment to the ordinance that's already in place. What we done is we pulled together several different things within the current ordinance. We looked at this to make it more, I guess you'd say, user-friendly for public and for our operations also. So coming forward within this draft ordinance is, the amendments are in there. I can't spell them all out individually, but it's different than, of-
The only thing I would add to it is, well, we've experienced over the years, it's been a long time since we actually amended the nuisance ordinance, and there are some points in it that really need to clarification, so that both the operations of the county and the residents of Lake County could understand exactly what the ordinance was addressing. So this eliminates any, or it's a, it's a very good effort to eliminate any ambiguities. And that was the whole goal of it, so. It really doesn't change any of the substance of what we're trying to do with the nuisance ordinance. It simply tightens it up so that people can understand what's going on, and that's all.
And do you believe it's appropriate- And do you believe it's appropriate to state for the record, because when we say Lake County, we're talking about all of Lake County outside of the jurisdictions of the town of Lakeview and the city.
That is correct, that's exactly correct.
Okay, the hearing is now open. Do you have anybody that would like to comment on the ordinance? Once again, we're gonna leave this hearing open until the conclusion today, and then we will be having a second hearing that will take place March first up in Christmas Valley. The, this talk is definitely.
Well, I think it'd be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to just, our addition to have a discussion on the nuisance position.
Yes.
At this point.
Well, we will continue the hearing, and at this time we'll open up the discussion on our nuisance position. Okay, so we have updated that nuisance ordinance, and I think that some real progress is made there. We're ready for it. We're ready to post this position, I think you have a job description before you that I'm hoping you can approve. The focus of this job is going to be on nuisance enforcement. There will be a small part of this job that will be in the office supporting the building department in their code specialist duties, but the main part of this job, eighty percent of this job, is focused on nuisance enforcement. The salary scale that we're proposing is the same as the code specialist position. That's what the union wants because substantially the same kind of work as a code specialist in the field doing inspections, enforcing compliance to codes, and in this case, just the nuisance ordinance. So the way that plays out, the salary range is, step one would be about thirty-one thousand six hundred dollars. Step six, if they did that in five years from now, they would be at forty thousand three hundred dollars. So for the next budget year, that top end is about forty, forty-one, three. So for this next year, we're looking at a fully loaded worst-case scenario of full cost of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Some highest cost scenario, not necessarily worst case. Highest cost, not worst case, yeah. That would assume the costliest insurance and everything, so it wouldn't be more than fifty-eight thousand dollars, fully booked. Well, and even though we're talking about the position description and the announcement, Jay, as we pointed out yesterday, some of the other costs, just for public knowledge, is we, you know, we recognize we're gonna have office costs, we're gonna have vehicle costs, those types of things that go with this job, but we also believe this is long overdue and this is the right thing to do. And the committee put a tremendous amount of work into this whole process on campus, citizens of Lake County.
And so with, beans, we're talking dollars, thank you very much, talking dollars, Jay and I listened yesterday, there has to be some dollars besides the salary and the vehicle and all that, some abatement dollars to have to put to the side. So the number that Jay and I talked about yesterday for this person today would be to start with ten thousand dollars. Or they, we know that that, I believe that probably low dependent, but we're trying to approach this with a soft touch, try to get the ownership of the landowners cleaning up on their own, but we'd be remiss if we didn't put some dollars there for a bait.
Oh, yeah.
If we have to go in and clean up the place, just fees for the landlord, some of those.
Yes, no, that's an excellent point, and another point along that line, we talked about it yesterday, is we have accounted for this, we tried to have a long-term vision, so on last year's budget, even though we have a little different structure we were talking about initially, we put forward the monies to cover a position similar to this. And because we couldn't get to where we needed to get at that time before we adopted our budget, we moved those monies into contingency, so they are available.
Right.
And we believe they're gonna be available going forward, so. So what I envision here is, this will be a department within the building fund. One oh one department would be building, one oh two would be nuisance enforcement. One oh three is already on site, so that's where planning used to be.
Yep.
Hopefully this person will come on before next fiscal year, in fact, maybe work as many as three months this year. We have six thousand dollars right now in the planning budget for nuisance abatement. Six thousand dollars that hasn't been spent, so that could be used. Darwin's given us a five side.
Five.
Five, yeah, but we have something. Okay, but yeah, we set aside the money for it, so that's not a problem. So the four, the four oh two, one oh two would be the fund. And we already have a line for nuisance abatement, so that ten thousand dollars you're talking about would be part of that materials and services budget that we'll develop for next year.
Well, and laying it out that way, it lets us track everything with nuisance.
Yeah.
Where the building fund is an enterprise, completely, completely separate. And if it gravitates where we're gonna go, twenty percent or anything in the future, we would make that budget decision then.
And along those same lines, and it'll be for a discussion to have with Mr. Bailey at a later point in time, is the restitution that we may run into, I mean, the reality. But it sounds like there's a variety of ways we could go about that. And at some point in time, we need to have those discussions so that we have that as part of our processes we move forward.
Yep. All right, so I've been over the job description a couple of times. Jay's put up with me, I went to his office and I've been going, have you had a chance to review it and argue?
So last night after I received it, and I was sitting in my chair at home, and I reviewed it on my handy-dandy screen there, I haven't reviewed it. I probably have missed something, but I trust that it's been fully vetted.
Yeah, well, you know, the thing that I always, and Jay's good about it, other related duties as assigned basically, it's in there, which does give us a little bit of leeway within there as, as maybe this job description may change a little bit in the future, we might have to rewrite some of it and so on, but I think this is a good, adequate job description for where we're at today, okay?
We're agreeing with that. So what I'm hoping for is that you can approve not only the job description, but the salary classification, the same as the code specialist.
So I will move to accept the nuisance enforcement officer job description as presented, and then I'll do the salary range second.
I will second that, it's been moved and segmented to approve the nuisance enforcement officer position description as presented, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll move to set the salary range with the recommendation that came forward in step one, thirty-one six, thirty-one thousand six hundred, and it's step five or six, six, eighty thousand three hundred dollars.
I'll second that, it's been moved and segmented to accept the salary range that Denise presented to us. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Well, yeah, there's some discussion, I have to thank Jay and the committee and everybody that worked on this. I wanna make sure and get that out there. I'm the commissioner facilitator, but they're the ones that got the work done. They're the ones that made things happen, so thank you to all of them.
That almost goes without saying.
But thank you.
No, I mean, they got the work done.
Yeah.
No, it's very much influential energy, you're, I don't know what the self-effacing statement perhaps there, because you took the bull by the horns to bring the group together that has longed to have some remedy for this, and we very much appreciate the board for your stepping forward, and very much appreciate the committee and all the work that went into it, so, yes. I think we need to ask for a hall in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, one last comment, Jay, as you post that, and I know you do that, but just as a quick reminder, that that salary range will be based upon experience and those types of things. And we have the right to hire, hire the step one.
Yes.
Get the right person with the right kind of experience.
Yep. Is there anything from the committee or any other comments?
No.
No?
Here we go.
Thank you, guys. Here we go.
Steve? Are you, on this nuisance, are you gonna notify the landowner before coming along any property?
Yes, if there, if there's a piece of property that is deemed to be a nuisance, this nuisance enforcement officer will contact the landowner quite how they believe is out of compliance, give an opportunity for him to give in compliance. And our, our whole theory on this, Steve, is work on this with a soft hand to just try to get people to be in compliance with what the local law is. If you look at the ordinance, the draft ordinance that's there, and review it compared to the other one, you can see that we're trying to make it so that gives everybody the ability to get their place in compliance. And like some of your properties, just to use you as an example, certain parts of this don't apply, don't apply to farm land where they might apply to the urban growth boundary. So you have to be sure to read that and see on that definition down there what your zoning is where you're at. So, we tried to clean that up so it was easier to understand. A lot of people would misread that, so if you look at that, say, an R, whatever zone this, certain numbers don't apply to, so. So it's okay to have an old Baylor part. It's not like Haitian, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, as I said, we'll continue with the hearing being open until the end of our meeting today. And our next item will be our, thanks, Jay.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Darwin.
Jay?
Jay.
We still have organizational chart, if you've stayed in for that.
Okay, yeah. He didn't ask anyone.
Yeah.
He was being beckoned.
Yeah. Well, maybe while, just so he's here, maybe we'll go to meeting minutes.
So there are six sets, shall we review them?
Please, slowly.
January three, January four, January seventeen, eighteen, thirty-one, and February one.
I only have one correction, Denise has already got it, so I'll move to approve all seven minutes as presented.
I'll second it, it's been moved and segmented to approve all of the listed minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Jay's back, county organizational chart draft.
So we did make a couple little changes from yesterday's draft. We had forgotten the museum, so we have added them, and we have facilities and fairgrounds in the round roof since everything's hypothetical, but although we're not, it's the same as yesterday. Do you want me to give an overview of what and why, where we get to? Or do you want to?
That's, you're hidden, yeah, you're.
Go ahead, okay. So what our hope is now and in the future is to have an organizational chart in place so that general public and staff, new staff coming in knows how things flow through the courthouse, not really flow, but where certain positions sit and whatnot. We will be working in the future on doing a flow chart that will also hopefully help the general public and our new staff as they come in so that they know where certain positions fall. Like my position, I'm not only their administrative assistant, but I'm our fleet manager, our IT manager, our transit manager, Wolf Degradation, a few different things. Everybody being small, we all wear two different hats, so we're hoping to get information out so that people know where to go when they're trying to get something accomplished, so, that's the goal.
And so do we, just by consensus, approve this or do you want by motion?
I think by consensus.
I just know the county council numbers, they don't, usually I'm under janitorial services, so I'm happy with the motion.
We motion.
Well, that's, it's an org chart, so that's a good point.
That's strange for attorneys not even make the list.
This document, we're gonna have to be updating this frequently. We're gonna be planning to put it in our budget book, so at least once a year, it will be updated to show any positions changes, so.
I'm assuming it will be on the website also.
It will be on the website also.
And as much as I said yesterday, the departments will know when they're proposing something, the person that will ultimately know if we have positions to add will be Jay, so Jay, I'm sure will work closely with Denise with you as the webmaster to make those updates. So I, I'm fine with it. Legal counsel, is there any reason that this needs to be in the motion?
No, by consensus is fine, I think we, we appropriate.
Well, by consensus, then we will adopt the heretofore draft of our organizational chart as a permanent organizational chart for Lake County. And thank you again, Denise.
Thank you, Jay, Denise, Jay and Josh.
And Josh.
And Josh, for sure.
Denise, you have a part of that that you mentioned.
Yes, I just have a quick little thing, gentlemen, we're working on installing that EIS program, the same program that our sheriff's department utilizes, and they're gonna be doing training next week. I just needed to let you gentlemen know that we have loaned them four of our training computers, they're all wiped and whatnot, there's nothing on it other than training material for them to utilize for that training, so.
Okay, very good. Mr. Bailey, we're gonna start the other part of the legal updates at eleven, but do you have anything else for open session legal updates?
No, not for open, there are two short things for executive session.
Okay, well, Commissioner, if you're okay with it, we're gonna go ahead and take a break then because our last, besides the executive session, our last item that I'm aware of still starts at eleven o'clock, so we're gonna take a break until eleven AM.
Okay, the budget items, things are just representation.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll come back in the session at eleven.
Do you want to do some sound?
Sure.